I'll call the Dixon County Commission to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kind of had a busy morning.
We've had a real busy. I'm trying to find my page here. That's my page. Okay. We do have two additions to our agenda today. First one is considered approval of a proposal for aerial photography and the second one is to view and consider bids for worth replacement at the transfer station shop. So those two additions, I move we approve the agenda?
Second.
The move is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The consent agenda are the minutes of December 12th work session and regular meeting. Payroll of $327,818.54. Wire payments of $2,768.20. Fund expenditures of $479,533.13. And abatements of $3,157.08. And I did have time to ask you ahead of time Brad, but on the fund expenditures there was technical technology. There were several in there. Checks to them. Was that software for different ones?
Was that piece of equipment you asked for?
Okay. So that's what that was for. Okay. But I thought, yeah. All right. Were there any other concerns on the expenditures? Well, there also was from Kenworth and Salina, there was two or $3,000 credits on some bills. How did that take place?
I think that we had to order some parts and they weren't what Andy was expecting, so we sent them back and replaced it. And so we ended up with some credits.
Okay.
Yes.
We did have one big bill in there too for one of ours. It's been like almost a year ago. The water has been down and-
I've seen that CBI.
Been at the repair shop for almost a year and it was, the transmission was completely out of it, so it was a big bill. We essentially got a new tractor now.
Well, then that's, I don't quite, you know, when I see what the expenditure was for, I mean, I saw that with transmission.
Yeah.
I mean-
But that was on a tractor.
That was on one of the old tractors.
Yeah, okay.
Which are out of work for the life or the age, still have relatively low hours, so it's worth putting money into them. Probably wouldn't do that again on that one, but hopefully it lasts for many years now.
Right. Okay. Any other concerns on the consent agenda? Now that approved, we move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
The move is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Commissioners comments and committee reports. Craig, did you have any?
Yeah, I left luncheon, I left at noon, but who was the grand prize winner for the ugly sweater?
Well, I'll explain.
Oh, okay. I'll defer to you then, Laverne. I thought it went well. I did go to Newton on Tuesday down to the act synopsis that MCK, NKC put on. They had three speakers and a lawyer, you know, so the three speakers were fairly good and the lawyer was there. He did a real good job of estate planning and how, you know, farmers could transfer property to, to the, keep the farm alive. And I didn't realize, I shouldn't say realized, but, you know, and every situation is different, but he said LLCs is the best way to, most of the time, because it, you know, lets the, keeps the farm together and the one that's been farming or stays home to farm, you know, you got two or three other kids that don't want to farm, you know, to keep it, because you get more invested in it. And then there was an agronomist from South Dakota and then I had to deal here with the speakers when I lost here my pile of stuff, but the other three speakers did a real good job.
That's something I probably should have attended.
Yeah, you should have, but it was really good. They presented information about NKC and Frontier and then Manhattan co-ops wanting to join in with it now.
Really?
Yeah.
They're getting.
Yeah. But that's all. There's nothing on the computer.
Okay. Well, we did have the, our luncheon Friday here at the courthouse and we did have the addition of the ugly sweater contest and somehow I got appointed that and I didn't realize how much, what's the word, pressure they put under me, because I had to pick a winner, because they had a prize. And I narrowed it down to Barb, which was a Christmas tree, and Marty Holt. And anyway, I went with Marty because with Barb and her Christmas tree would have won if she could have just put a star on her head, because she had everything else, you know. She had the bulbs and the decorations for the tree, you know, but she just lacked that one thing, having that star on the top of her head. So that was the, but it was a good time by all and a lot of food and like I say, I think that was well attended, so. Lynn, do you have anything?
Since I was out of town-
Oh, you got a report on your trip.
Well, you know, it had rained there one day, so which we could use here. I did receive an invitation and plan to respond. It's got an RSVP on the 20th. General Funk's having a holiday reception and so I finally attended that. And that's actually after the first of the year when I respond. And then Central Kansas Mental Health did have their monthly meeting and I sent regrets that I would not attend that, so. But I'll get the minutes and I'm sure everything went smoothly, so. And the ugly sweater contest, or the-
I actually-
The judge.
I actually wore a sweater and I kind of got some looks from some people, because I think they couldn't believe that I, because I told them, I said, I haven't had a sweater on for 40 years, so it's kind of a big deal for me to put a sweater on. And as you know, as I got hot today, so I'm down to a tee shirt already. We did have a busy work session this morning and I think Sarah Matthews' presentation on the new photography that we will be taking up in our business session and also she had done a lot of work with, on her thesis on fire departments in Dixon County and that was very good information for us to look at and maybe do some evaluation of those results that she had presented to us. Okay.
You might mention, or I'll go ahead and mention, Phil Cosby had stopped in earlier and Bill Clark with Lynn Hills, but Phil Cosby had stopped in with a group of ministers as well as representatives from some of the churches and had requested we study information and given us and put something on the agenda in January for consideration on a letter they'd like signed. So I think that's probably something we'll need to address, just, you know, honor their request to make some sort of statement, whether it's neutral or on their behalf or whatever we come up with.
Presentations, observations, proclamation, and other public comment. We're going to have a budget hearing at 11:15, so I guess we're ready, Janelle.
Well, in reviewing the expenditures, the year end expenditures, there are a couple funds that we will need to do a budget amendment on. And you should have those sheets. We're amending two funds that we had budgeted to use all the-
This one here?
No.
What did you last week?
Oh, okay.
For the budget amendment.
Okay, yeah.
There's two funds that we're closing and that would be employee benefits and health bond and interest. Employee benefits we're closing because we've allocated those expenditures to come out of each department and fund instead of having a separate fund for employee benefits. And health bond and interest we're closing because we no longer have the note payment for the health department, so those monies will be transferred to the general fund. And then the other three, which include the transfer station, Dickinson County 911 emergency phone and 911 emergency phone, the expenditures exceeded what was budgeted. They were under budgeted when we were going through the budget for 2013, so. And the transfer station, we purchased a compactor. It was a capital expansion. That was 94,000, almost 95,000. Dickinson County fund, we had exceeded, that was a new fund that was set up. We exceeded the expenditures, what I had estimated what we were going to be spending. And the same thing with the other emergency funds. So since we exceeded our budget authority, we have to amend the funds and we're using carryover to pay for those costs. So just requesting that you approve the budget amendment and sign the document unless you have any other questions for me.
No, it, yeah, I didn't realize, a couple of those funds are just no longer needed, so you're just-
Right.
You're just closing those accounts out.
Right. Just cleaning up some of our accounts.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing, because the health department's paid off.
Yes, definitely.
Always good to pay things off.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always nice when you can say that.
EMS was paid off.
I wish it was due.
EMS is going to go on for, how long was that funding?
Nineteen, now, longer than that.
Four years, I remember.
Yeah. So we have a few more.
We have quite a few more.
Four, four, yeah.
Yeah.
And mainly that transfer station, because we put in the new compactor is what-
Right.
Kind of changed there. That's what probably got it. Is there any, you could, wants to do that right now? Good. If, you have any questions, Lynn, or are you going ahead?
No.
I'll have to pause the hearing.
Oh, that's true. Is there anything else, Janelle, you want to report?
No.
Okay. We'll close the hearing then on the budget hearing and back in regular session, I move that we approve these amended changes in our, in our budget. Got the correct thing? Okay. The move is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I think all three of you need to sign.
Yeah.
And then Barb, if you would, it has to be.
Protest, did you say? Protest? Yeah. My bad.
There's only one place to sign, huh?
There's one for you to take care of.
Thank you very much.
We're doing that, Brad. When's the fracture critical bridge report going to be in? I know it's supposed to be in the end.
Correction critical.
Right, well, the seven we've got.
It's an annual, so it shouldn't be-
Yeah, we're supposed to get, I thought we were supposed to begin the report, you know.
We should be getting it.
Okay.
Because we're done annually.
Yeah, that's right. We got asked back in October sometime, you said it should be around the end of the year.
Yeah, I'll find out for sure. Angel may have gotten it.
Yeah. I probably should have reported also that I did attend the, you know, Central Juvenile Detention Meeting over Johnson City yesterday and for the past month or two, we've been discussing the backup generator over there is, hasn't been working up to par for them and so our meeting yesterday, we did approve by the new backup generator and I had worked a little bit with Sean over there, what they're going to do with the old one. And they were kind of in the impression they were just going to junk it out and anyway, I don't know if we got a good deal or a bad deal, but they did make a motion to give the generator us, Dickinson County. And what the problem is, it's been leaking some water and antifreeze into the motor and so, but I talked to Brad and he thinks that maybe our people at the shop can take the head off and maybe it's just a head gasket needs replaced and so we might be able to use that generator without any much cost to us, just some labor maybe to get that fixed. So anyway, it's, like I say, we'll find out how much is wrong with the motor, but-
The price was right to start around.
The price was right, so I took advantage of that.
Did you put it in your truck and bring it over or?
Well, they just had Martin take care of that and like I say, Martin will be able to, if their mechanics down there will look into it and maybe get the thing running and because it generates, it's just the motor, the motor runs, but it loses water when it's running. So if there's a gasket somewhere, we can-
We've got some pretty good mechanics down there too that kind of, I mean, we're fortunate, you know, that's one of those savings that the county realizes sometimes that kind of goes unnoticed, because it's not our-
If you're going to be some of the work and stay there.
We got time.
Something like this would be a simple task, but I'm quite honest with you, man, just some big equipment there, you still working on it, it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
It's all walking apart. You want to address Mark while he's here?
Oh, yes. Yes, why don't we take care of that now? You want to come forward, Mark?
Long time.
He, Mark has been very dedicated in working with the DARE program and like I say, he's worked with all the school kids in Dixon County and has, how many years have you been doing that, Mark?
For Dickinson County?
Yeah.
For 14 years.
Wow.
Starting, it'll be 15 years next, next year, or January.
Yeah. Anyway, we, we've got a certificate here that we want to present to you, that we just appreciate the dedication of your service to that program and you want to just come on back here.
You might stand on your shoulder.
Yeah, that's my wife.
Yes.
I don't know, the camera's blurred or we can't see the background of the buses on.
I suspect this one.
You don't think it's possible?
No.
Yes, like I say, it really meant for guidance for the children and gives them values that, like I say, very good values for them to live to and let's say I-
Have a fun time doing it, I really do.
Well-
Hate to give it up, but I figured we need somebody a little younger.
They keep you young though.
Oh, yes. These old bones are not as fast as they used to be.
But the kids keep you young though, don't they?
Oh, they do, you know. You know, you go in the classroom and you think, okay, now I got to teach another DARE class, you know, I got to teach this, you got, because you got your lesson plans, you got to get going, you got to do all this stuff. And when you go in there and then when all of a sudden the kids start answering questions and start being really happy with you and they start doing things, then your whole attitude changes completely, it's like, hey, this is great, you know, so.
Well, like I say, it's, being in the schools like that and just doing that work, I think it's very valuable.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Appreciate all you do. Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're ready now.
Okay. All right, got to go through my list here. First of all, just to report, a scrap level that piled was processed, finished up last week, we have total of 161 tons, which yielded for that, ours, $24,187 of revenue. They are down at the highway shop, Martin has a bunch of scrap down there, but they compiled from the dirt sites and things that we keep and they're processing that down there as well, so there'll be an additional amount that will have come in, but don't know what that is yet, so. I had received some information on that mortgage registration issue from Doug McKinney and I forwarded that to you and I also made a copy of that, put that in the packet showing the impact of that across the state as that issue continues to be momentum, just to keep you informed. You also have a letter in there from Janelle regarding the year end transfers that she is proposing to do and is there anything you want to say on that, Janelle?
Those are transfers that I will not do until probably the 30th of December. I will review the expenditures again, so I may not transfer that total amount, I will not exceed that amount. But those are additional transfers. I'm trying to build up our capital funds, that's why I'm requesting that we do that.
So they may change a little.
It may change a little, but I will let you know when they do transmit.
No questions on that one. In looking at the Justice Center project, I have provided you a very rough, very preliminary timeline that is, I would certainly note, may be a fluid document throughout life project, probably more so now than it speaks progress. But also, talking to Paul Warden County, they had recognized and determined early on a location in Colorado, the National Institute for Corrections. And I had attended the course out there, it's a 24 hour course, that kind of prepares the leaders involved in a project like that, in this case with the commissioner and myself here, my brother runs a jail, attends, it kind of gives them an idea on how to begin the process of, from the very, the very ground floor of designing and creating and building and housing or inhabiting a correctional facility. And they, they thought it was very beneficial for them to attend that, from looking at that information, I just want to hit and print the book out for you, so I'm trying to go through that detail. It looks like it would be something that would be very good for us to also attend to kick off that process. For the correctional aspect of it, it could be very valuable, obviously that's going to be one of the biggest costs in the correctional portion of it, so. The next class that is available is in August, so we've got a little bit of time, but during the month of January, I'd really like to determine if we would like to attend that to get us RSVP or reschedule registration, we get our names in the hand. It appears as of January, it's going on June, it's forward at this point, so, and probably isn't going to suit for us, so. But the timeline itself that's there is just kind of a document to start with and I gave you both of those and give you some time over the next month to sort of review those and we can talk about it and go from there, so. But probably the first or second week of January, we'll come back and discuss that training at the NIC and see about getting something scheduled on that, so.
And you said that's in August?
Yeah, it's in August now. I don't remember the date, it's sometime along.
How many days was that?
It's actually a four day course, 32 hour course. So it would be a full week of travel time, if not just a minute or so.
And that wasn't in Colorado, is it?
It's out, Colorado Springs and Etterhead, so. And it might say right on the front of the book there, but it's on the machine. They bring book there. They have a facility that they do the training, training in Colorado, so it looked quite, according to the Paul Warden County Administrator, it was extremely beneficial to them to help the process of selling, selling to the public and planning and creating and everything that you do specifically with respect to a correctional facility. Okay, you've got, the Road and Bridge Department has been very busy. They have, this week they removed a couple of tubes in the 500 mark, 1400 avenue. Were able to get that done and back open within less than two days. And then also they are in the process of completing today, most probably, if they're not done now, the structure, one of the structures was more stout from the flooding over by Jerry Reynolds' house on 2200 Avenue. They just started on that last week and they should be finishing it up and having it open up today, so. I know that will make the residents out there very happy, because with Jerry had contacted me several times, I'm extremely concerned with the slick moisture coming this winter and the steepness of that road going to the east, they can't get up the hill, it's really icy snowy, so just allow that, max it's in there probably, whatever gets bad, which sounds like could be coming. Also, I provide you a listing in your packet there of the number of projects a year to date for 2013, which again, I have to brag on the bridge guys, Road and Bridge crews, they've completed, I'm going to do a year, I think we got 15 or 16 avenue that they were able to get done this year, which goes to show their dedication and commitment, but also the planning that we've done. If it wasn't for being able to get those types of structures removed and replaced, we'd be looking for those, those are what their companies are too, so. And of course, the 2200 avenue that worked on Alice, the first of a bunch of human FEMA bridges, that funding is paying for, so. Let's see, we also have plans to start working on the Shiner Bridges, the structures here after the first of the year, those three or four locations that we've, we've got on that, we've got the materials for and that'll be the first thing that starts off in January. And jumping over to the transfer station, I'd reported to you a few weeks ago, the last rain, and I don't even recall when that was, honestly, but it's been a while, we had a number of leaks in the roof out there. We had the roofing company go out and look at it, discovered due to the age of the roof and the metal, tanned and shot, for lack of a better description, I think that's maybe a technical term, it's shot. The metal around the screws have just rusted and gone, there's no, there's no repairing it, other than just replacing the metal. Since that point, we've obtained bids from three roofing companies and you have a tally sheet there. The three being Jesse Howard Roofing here in Ambling, Walkout Services, Chapman, and then Ray Roofing in Newton. And the prices on all three of them are for the same exact material and services and Jesse Howard Roofing coming in at the, at the low bid of $10,718, which is always good to have a local company do that. And the other factor is that he is in a position where he- other factor is that he is in a position where he can start on that in the next week or two, when the other people are going to be ready for the spring. We're a little concerned with wind and things, if one of those starts feeling up, there's not enough material around the screws and things that are holding it down, a lot of the worst part of the roof, so. I guess I'm glad to be able to report, the low bid is the person that can get on it as soon as possible and get the roof replaced, so, when we get to that on the agenda, we will request that we be able to order that with Jesse Howard Roofing, so.
Does that include all the, yeah, all the guttering and downspouts also?
Yes, that's the guttering, downspouts, and everything, but the roofless, turnkey jobs, so.
Yeah. I'm glad they're going with the 26 gauge material, some of them try to get five, five gauge, but that's, that's good heaven.
Hopefully we get around 40, 50 years out of it. And then the last thing I had was, we, and it's not on your list, but we did do a final walkthrough, final inspection on Detroit City System Number Three yesterday, for the ruins and everything passed with flying stars, contractor, the only thing that was noted by KDHCE and by us was the grass, and there is warranty in, in the grass, the contractor won't be released from the job until there's a good stand of grass, which obviously probably is spring.
And do they have to do one mowing that or?
No, they don't have to, you just have to get a good stand on it. And I didn't care if you asked about the sill fencing, it is, the contractor come back and remove that, that's part of the project, so. But everything went good, everything passed, they were having a impressed project, overall it's going very well, so, I wish all projects would do that, that didn't work that well, so. And then, of course, we, you had the presentation from Sherri Massey on the GIs aerial photography that we've been planning on budgeting for, and we'll leave more detail on that, I've got the bid proposal on that too, when you get that, I'll explain those details, okay?
Okay. Notices and Communications. I know this was the results of that survey, I don't know if you seen this land?
Yes, I did, it was, I think Barb gave a look to all of us on that.
Yeah, you seen that?
Whether these have a fitness benefit available?
Yeah, that was the results of that survey. We also got a thank you here from many of the people in the courthouse here that designed this, just a nice note from the workers here at the courthouse, and also clerk's office, there we go, a nice thank you from, from them, and also, you notice the tray of cookies, so, Barb, thank you for your, your work and your staff.
I've already sampled mine, and they're great, so, great company.
Now, it is a good time at Christmas to, but we're just very fortunate to have the staff that's working for us at the county, we just, like I say, it kind of makes other people envy us sometimes, from other counties that, that are dealing with staff problems, that seem like we just, have got a good staff that's very dedicated to us. This we better take care of, is Kansas Association of County, it's our annual membership dues, it belongs to the state organization, it's $4,347.48. We don't necessarily, we have that emotion to prove that, or just make sure you get And I don't know what this really involves here, it's, KDHCE, it's a waste program to deal with the tires, apparently you can get some, some grants. I don't know what's come from that.
What are we looking at?
I don't know. You can look into it and maybe figure out more, just that car, it's hard to me to figure out just what it is. As Lynn mentioned earlier, that we could get an invitation here to General Paul Funk and for a holiday reception on Friday, the 3rd of January. So, yes, I'll have to let you know, Barb, on that if I transit to him. This is safety information on, on pipeline from another company here, if somebody wants to look at that. Okay, Doug, did you have anything for us today?
Uh, no, no, the tax sale was confirmed last week by Judge Platt, and the deeds have been sent out, there is some excess money from one of the purchasers, and we've given notice to the other entities involved, otherwise why, that, that's concluded.
Do, do we get our property tax out, if, if there is money? Do we get any property tax payment out of that or not?
Well, all the money went to the clerk, to the treasurer, I mean.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
Okay. Introduction and consideration of resolutions, hopefully we have any today, unfinished business, going through our, our new business here, we've got a couple of things to take care of, the, consider the, the approval for the proposal of the aerial photography, and Brad, maybe you could highlight just a few of the things Sherri said on how we're going to work with other counties on that, and?
Okay, yeah, we had, for the last year and a half, actually, we've worked on this project, identifying, we, we knew that we had the need to upgrade our aerial photography, and trying to, to make the long story short, we were able to identify the product that we wanted to use, and by working with them and asking a few questions, and then also working with Riley, Gary, and Selene Counties, and getting two, more than three, three or more counties to go on with this product at the same time, we were able to save each one of us considerable amount of money, so. The company that is doing this aerial photography, that provides the photography, is called Pictometry, and they're a worldwide company, and we've never had their product before, although we're looking forward to it, and a couple of the things that make that, you know, wouldn't be technical aspect, because I just don't want to make myself look bad, financially, we had budgeted enough to do the aerial photography all at once originally, and through the corporate ventures, or cooperative ventures of the other counties, we were able to engage in this agreement where a six-year, the agreement's for three years, but if we agree to a second three years, we can get photography again at the same rate, and we can divide those payments out over six years, which essentially would be about $34,000 each year, instead of the $100,000 we had expected going on, which makes it much more appealing to us, for the budget standard, more precise less money, and by doing it with the other counties, we'll save about $10,000 off the overall cost, so. It's not unfortunate, it's nothing small to, to laugh at either, so. And there's some other benefits going on with that, like we'll give the, access to the other counties' photography as well, the ones that are around us, which comes in handy sometimes for various reasons, so. But the only other thing I would add is, I know there's been some misunderstanding and question on what benefits of aerial photography are in the past, essentially every department in our structure uses it in one way or another, but especially the GIS candidate appraisers' office, this, this photography has an accuracy, guaranteed accuracy of plus or minus three inches, which means the appraisers' office, if looking at a building, they can look at it from the side, top, almost any angle, and they can, it would save them trips out to the field to review something that otherwise they're going to be spending travel time and field time on, so, and the list goes on and on as far as the benefits, but we're really excited about making it through that, so. What we would be asking for today would be permission to engage in the agreement with Pictometry for the aerial photography for 2014.
Sherri showed us some of the clarity of the pictures, which is just amazing, how clear the pictures are from, from an aerial view, and, and I can say that it is something that you can really benefit from by, by that clarity, and so, this, like I said, do you have a contract here today?
I do have it, yes.
One of the things that impressed me under our presentation is that, that even though we still would go out and visually inspect some of the properties and measurements and so on, it would always be current on any changes that took place, and so, so structures that were on the property, if something had happened where they're removed, it would just show up, it'd be easy for them to gather that information, or if, if any new structures had happened to go up, the accuracy standpoint was very impressive.
One other thing that comes to mind, if this company agrees in the contract to do that, should we have a tornado, I believe it's F3 magnitude or greater, that does any substantial damage to our county, they will immediately come in and do another flyover at no cost, and give us those free images, to help with the recovery of that, as well as the damage assessment and those things. And I don't know many of the other companies that were willing to do that, but that's something they do for their clients, so. Which is, as you may or may not remember, when, when the tornado happened in Chapman, we actually used a blue French satellite to get.
You did use a French satellite to get the view.
And it took us some time to get those images to the Department of Defense, but we were able to get them, and, and of course, the accuracy was nothing compared to what this will provide, but it did help us tremendously, showing, working on the damage assessment, so.
You're here, motion to enter into this contract?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, we enter this into the contract with pictorial photography?
Pictometry.
What was the amount exactly, for records?
The total amount for the six years is $211,000, $210,000.
Okay.
If you divide that out, it's 33,842 a year, so.
And, and we will just be paying that by the year again?
And, and the year's variable, because the first one, we pay $9,000 upfront, and then for the flight and things, but that's what they're supposed to be.
Yeah. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We've got the bids here on the roof replacement at the transfer station, that were three, three bids that, that we received, and?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go with Jesse Howard Roofing of Avenue Kansas for $10,718, per staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Is there anything else?
Future, when we're gonna, the survey we did, we're gonna, how we're gonna handle that, put it off for the next couple of weeks?
Well, we've got, discussed that during work session, probably first, we kind of see where we're at on it.
Probably.
But how busy is our schedule next week?
I don't think it's busy at all, Barb and I won't be here.
I was gonna say, you might mention what our opening is, our closing of the courthouse over Christmas, and we will have our meeting the 26th.
Courthouse will be closed on the 24th and 25th, it'll be during, maybe not the 26th, so, and then we'll be closed on Wednesday the 1st, so.
Hope everybody has a safe holiday and, and a great Christmas, and?
Are you gonna be here next?
I will be.
We got this one, the mortgage registration fee, could we go on work session a little more, I'd like to, because I didn't realize it was a heritage VMS2 until I read that.
Right.
Yeah, it, money does flow back to the county.
Right, that's a good one, and how, how we've used it, if there's any, if we've used that for, for that.
Yeah, and if you, if you wouldn't mind waiting till the second, if you're worried, we can talk on the, on the, on the exercise.
Yeah, that's fine.
Fitness thing, we'll get you, get some numbers.
Yeah. Just something like, you know, put it out there so we got, you know, on the radar.
Yeah. And the work session, also the proclamation that the?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Phil Crosby had brought in, forced to look at that information, we can put that, the second for that, first?
The first one in January.
First, maybe in January, yes.
Oh, something else that we might want to run in the work session is, Janelle, I talked about economic development activities.
Yeah.
Janelle, and, and the Flint Hill deal too, but I mean, this is separate from what that was, is, is Janelle's always gonna go with me to Beloit, but she never has made a trip with me, so.
I will, sometimes.
Yeah, it might be too late to make the decision, but.
Next year sometime.
Yeah, right, next year. But I, I think my feeling is, and I like it through other commissioners, is what, what the county's role in economic development should be, is that, so.
But this program that he was talking about, we could participate without joining there?
My understanding, Bill said, is that it was free to participate in that.
But he would like for us to join.
Sure.
You know, we, we've discussed this previous years, you know, whether we wanted to be involved in two different ones, and so, like I say, that's another discussion that we could have now, but in the past, we decided just to stay with North Central and plan, and we haven't.
And I don't think we would want to give up North Central, that's been a great tie-in, but I think probably what the issue is, we overlap so much with the Flint Hills, the Fort Riley connection, the regional of, that we're in with, and you mentioned Manhattan being one of the fastest growing cities, and regional, and so on, I mean, we're, we have that, that tie-in, and if we could benefit from both, it'd be worth it.
Well, that was, those are things that we should be looking at in the work session.
A lot of that would kind of come out of determining exactly what role we want us to play.
Right.
Yeah.
And not be pulling danger, that's, that's been the angel question we've dealt with for years, so.
In the past, we felt like we belonged to one, and that was, was all we needed to, so.
And another item for keeping, putting down on it is courthouse security, you know, we need to address that, what we're gonna do here with?
Right now, just to give you an update, we're waiting on some bids to come in for this east entrance, from contractors, and see what we're looking. this east entrance from contractors, to see what we're looking at price-wise, do what we want to do there.
How, I mean, what are we, we taking down the sign, I mean, we got the six?
That's our plan.
Okay, that's what I thought we...
We'll take down the signs next week, and we've got the video right down here, and we've got another one that will go upstairs that says for the process, putting in, like I said, we've got, we've got the same thing we're putting at the entrance in the Health Department, the awareness law for this, for...
But that, of all the buildings that we've got, then basically, we'll be taking the signs down for now, and then later, if we decide we want to change, then we could go with whatever.
Maybe the law changes, or we see something different we want to do, we can always deviate from where we're at, so. And I suspect that maybe something might be addressed in the legislature early on this time, I don't know. They can't decide whether they can carry guns in the Capitol.
Yeah, it's not like they can.
The doors down here, you're thinking of going with something all new, not trying to move that back?
Those doors are not very good, they've, the mechanics of those are not very good shape, so it'd be something probably new, similar to that, but something new that could be a barrier, so. And I know we were talking about trying to do something framed around doors, or whether we wanted to put block and brick, or something to mask the interior, and so then we're looking at some price options, so.
So, it might just be two double doors, and then the rest of it might be other material.
Yeah, and that's what we're...
And not as much glass as what's there now.
We're trying to avoid as much glass as we can, obviously, because of the, it's less secure and becomes problematic if somebody wants to throw something through it, so.
And you could look at more substantial glass than what's probably in that, those doors probably.
Yeah, those are just plate glass, they're not security glass of any type, so.
But like I say, I think, I'm glad we proceeded with what we did down at the service office and got that already done, because, like I say, I think that's a tremendous benefit for them, and somebody got that already done, and...
We should be able to come back after the first year, first meeting or so, with some more information and our recommendation on what to do and some numbers, so hopefully we'll have it by then, based on what we've talked about so far and what we've put figures out for, so. We are, we are moving forward with the west doors, we've already ordered locks are in, and the way that will work is that from the outside, employees will have a keypad. If you walk up to it during business hours during your day, there'll be a motion kicker that'll automatically unlock to let you out, but you wouldn't be able to get back in, it will be at public entrance. So that'll put us down to two until we get something done on this one, so. And it's not used as a public entrance very often, any, I...
Not too often.
Very few people come in and out that door, other than some employees that park to the left, so. But for fire purposes, another thing, you'll still be able to get out that door, and employees can come in.
We don't have a lot to do next year.
Yeah, well, whenever you go to meetings, but this is really about security, everybody's talking about it now, and like I say, no one has come up with a definite plan, it seems like everybody's kind of coming up to a plan that suits their needs, and so, I think that's what everybody's kind of decided to do.
Yeah, the document that Barb gave me is pretty apparent, and most everybody's...
Yeah, I've seen that.
Pretty much taken in the signs, and, so, other than with the dog, who has a lot of money to do a lot of different things, I guess, so.
Did they need to sign anything about their aerial photography?
Yeah, I got my name on it, just to sign it before, so, I'm excited.
I've moved with a jury.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second with a jury. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.